Good evening, everyone. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board for Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance empowers this board to hear references from the city council, applications for variances and special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, we will either make a final determination or send a recommendation to the city council. I'm Lori Summers, the current chair. Present here with me tonight are board members Mary Beth Burns, Matthew Rogers, Beth McLennan, Claire Weinberg, and Scott Gingold. We therefore have a quorum. Also present here tonight from city staff are Melissa Klotz and Ken Cox. This is a -- oh, Mark Munzer, sorry. Sorry, I missed you. And Mark Munzer. This is a formal hearing, and we have rules that govern our proceedings. Our most important rule is that only one person may speak at a time. It is not just civility, but it is necessary to accurately record our proceedings. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have an opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our normal procedure is that we hear first from the staff on the documents in the file. We will then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. After the applicant or appellant has completed their initial submission, any person who has a legal interest in real property located within 500 feet of the property that is the subject of the application or appeal may then present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. Next, others who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. When all opposing testimony and other statements have been received, the applicant or appellant will be given an opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Board members may ask questions of anyone offering testimony or statements at any time. All testimony and statements will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, we ask that you limit your testimony or statement to your own personal knowledge. When you testify or make a statement, please tell us your name and address, and be sure that your name is printed on the sign-up sheet at the entrance. Because we do not have a court reporter, it is imperative that you speak at a microphone, so your testimony or statement will be recorded. We are audio and video recorded in this space and subject to broadcast. When all of the testimony, other evidence, and statements have been received, we will close the record and begin our deliberations. Our first order of business is review of the meeting minutes from, let's take August 6th first. I think this was holdover because of lack of sort of quorum of the people that were here, but I think everybody that was here for the August 6th meeting is here this evening. Are there any corrections or comments with respect to the August 6th minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion regarding the August 6th minutes?
I move that we approve the August 6th minutes as drafted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we'll note abstention from members McLennan and Rogers, given their absence at that meeting. The next item we have is our minutes from our September 3rd meeting. Are there any comments or corrections on those? Are you on? I can't hear you.
Can we approve with only three?
Yeah, we -- there was a determination from staff that we just needed essentially the majority.
Okay. I don't have any corrections.
Okay, if there are no corrections, then is there a motion?
I move that we adopt our meetings for September 3rd, 2013, as drafted.
I second that motion.
The motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? And I will note abstentions from the other board members as they were absent from that meeting. The minutes approved. We'll move on to our next item of unfinished business, which is 1015 Chicago Avenue, and our understanding from staff that is that that application has been withdrawn.
That is correct.
And we need not take any further action on that?
Correct.
Okay. And then, moving on to 1602 Dempster Street, and if I recall correctly, it looks like members Weinberg, Burns, and Gingold were not present at that meeting. Is that correct?
Correct.
And have each of you had the opportunity to review the record from that meeting?
I have.
I have.
You have.
So, at this time, there is a motion on the table that has been seconded, and a vote was begun in favor of allowing the variance. All those remaining members that would wish to vote aye in favor of that motion, would you please now?
Aye.
Aye. And now two, and all those who would wish to vote nay?
Nay.
One. So, we are at five to two, which will carry that motion and approve it. So, we'll be done with that case. Our next order of business is new business, and it is 1114 Church Street. And Melissa, if you could read that into the record when you're ready?
Robert LeBotsky, architect, applies for major zoning relief to construct a concrete walk. The applicant requests an impervious surface ratio of 70.6 percent where maximum 65 percent is allowed, zoning code section 6889A. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents submitted with the application include variance application submitted August 6th, 2013, standards form, zoning analysis, plan of survey dated August 6th, 2013, site plan, elevations, zoning map of property, image of property, and spark meeting minutes of September 4th, 2013.
Okay, and at this time, if I could swear on anyone who thinks that they would wish to speak with us regarding 1114 Church Street? Do you swear from the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. And again, if you could give us your name and address before you begin, please.
My name is Robert LeBotsky. I'm an architect and board member of the Youth Job Center, and my address is 721 Forest Avenue in Evanston. The building at 1114 Church Street is the Youth Job Center. It's owned by the Youth Job Center. I think they've owned and occupied the property for about 14 or 15 years now. And I don't know, is everyone familiar with where the building is?
Yes.
Okay. The existing impervious conditions, surface area of the property is, the existing condition is exceeds the allowable 65 percent maximum impervious surface area by about 107 square feet, or about 1 percent. The current, or the existing property has concrete walks on the west side of the property, on the south side of the property. There's a brick walk at the front of the property on the north side that gives access to the front door of the house. And then, the rear of the property is a small parking lot that accommodates about five cars. There is also an existing ramp on the east side of the building. It's a ramp that goes, it starts at the rear of the building, and it goes down to the basement level of the building. That concrete ramp was built approximately over 30 years ago. In the last two years, we have done a major renovation of the interior of the Youth Job Center, and we've made the, we've made a main entrance on the east side of the building at the, that's accessible by that ramp, because, so that it's ADA accessible to the lower level or the basement of the building. We also put in a computer lab in the basement of the building that's open to the public. And our main service to our clients, most of it takes place on that basement level floor. So, the reason for the walk that we're now putting in, we're requesting to put in, is to be able to, for clients to be able to come to the building and walk to that ramp from the front of the building to the rear of the building, on the east side of the building, to where the ramp begins, so that they can then go down the ramp and get into this main entrance of the building. As I mentioned, the ramp is ADA compliant. The walkway is intended to be ADA compliant route, because currently, there's no way for anyone to really walk from the front of the building without going down the alley to get to the back of the building and get to this ramp. So, the only way to, currently, without this path, the only way to do this is either to go, you know, walk down the alley, or to walk into the building and walk out, you know, walk in the front of the building and walk to the back of the building and down the rear exit, and then go over to the ramp entrance. So, constructing that new walkway is what this, is what obviously put us additional amount of square footage over the allowable impervious surface. The ramp, the walkway, I mean, would connect at the front of the building, there's a brick, an existing brick walk that leads you up to the front of the building, so this new walk would connect to that brick path in the front of the building, and then go to the east, and then along the east side of the building, right adjacent to this ramp. The area on the east side of the building where the ramp is now located, there's about five feet of area between the ramp and the property line, so the path would, the new walkway would be within that, would take up three feet of that five feet of area. Currently, that area is all gravel, gravel and a few weeds, so.
Who owns the adjacent property?
Pardon?
Who owns the adjacent property to the east?
I don't know. It's a, it's a small condominium building. As I mentioned, we, it's almost two years ago that we did this interior remodeling in the lower level, and when we did that remodeling, we put in a new entrance on the east side there, and we also put in exterior lighting along the east side and the south side of the building, and we also have video surveillance cameras on the camera on the east side and the south side, to be able to visually, visually monitor the people coming in and out of the building. And I have to say, nearly 100 percent of the clients and other people that come to the Youth Job Center come, are pedestrians. I mean, our parking lot can't accommodate, the parking lots are used by the staff exclusively. So, this walkway will make it much more convenient for clients to access the lower level of the buildings.
Did you consider using pavers for the path around, so that it might be slightly less impervious and would be more consistent with the front walk?
Well, we considered using pervious concrete, which is actually 100 percent pervious, but under the current zoning, we'd only get a 20 percent credit if we use that concrete, and it's three to four times more expensive than regular concrete, and, you know, we still would be, you know, in excess of our, it wouldn't help us at all, because we'd still be in excess of our allowable pervious surface area.
What's the magnitude of the cost difference? I mean, not relative, but what's the, what are the dollars? So, to pour the concrete walkway, what would it cost you to use the pervious concrete versus the impervious?
The regular concrete is somewhere in the neighborhood of $4 to $5 a square foot. The pervious concrete's up around, I didn't actually get a quote for it, but it's up around $16 a square foot. It's much more expensive, because it's, it has to be, you have to excavate several feet below it, so that you create a drainage area.
What are pavers running?
Yeah, it's a lot more preparation for that.
Right. It's a lot more preparation. And also, to my knowledge, the pervious concrete hasn't been around that long. I don't know what the track record of it, you know, of its durability is.
I think what I was actually more curious about was pavers. I don't think that, I mean, I think that.
An open paver, open joint paver system.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the concrete would help with some of the impervious issue, but I agree that it, you know, it hasn't necessarily been, it hasn't necessarily been kind of more, been out there more long-term, so.
I didn't really consider, we didn't really consider open concrete paving, because, number one, on the east, on this, this area of the building gets almost no sunlight. Nothing really grows back there, because it's, you know, it's an area between the two buildings, and it's, and, you know, the open concrete pavers, you know, allow for.
These wouldn't be, we're not talking about the ones that grass grows in. We're talking about, I mean, essentially, they're not, most people probably wouldn't consider them open, but they, the joints in the pavers allow for, and the very nature of their design, basically, prevents as much runoff.
Right, but I'm not sure if they're ADA compliant, I mean, the whole, you know.
Let me backtrack. Is your, does your organization receive public funds, grants?
Yep.
So, you're required by law to be ADA accessible and meet with ADAG's requirements?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, I mean, we need to.
Okay.
And there isn't, as I mentioned, there's no, we have the ramp, which is ADA compliant, but to get to the ramp.
You need a compliance site access.
We need an accessible route, you know, which we, that's what we don't have.
Okay. I have a question for you. So, on the east, sorry, the west side adjacent to the concrete alley, you've got a three-foot wide path, and you say that that's walking down the alley to get to the back? It's not clear to me how that's necessarily walking down the alley, because you're actually on your property, not in the alley. So, can you explain why the ramp, why that walkway just can't be on where you've already got concrete, and not move it to the east side, and just leave it on the west side?
Well, that three-foot area on the west side that's adjacent to, between the alley and the, you know, it's right up against the, it's three feet, it's three feet, it doesn't, from the building, from the wall of the building to the alley, probably, and it's, we keep all the, it's the only place we can keep our trash, our trash containers, our dumpster. So, about half of that area is taken up by those pieces of equipment, and.
Would it, would it be possible to find a different location for those that might be easier than pouring all this new concrete?
No, there's no, I mean, those, those, right now, are except, they're right on the alley. They're accessible to the, you know, they're right off the alley. They're accessible, any other location, they would be, they wouldn't be on the alley for accessibility for the trash trucks to pick them up.
Right, so somebody would just have to take them out on garbage day? Right?
Well, no, I mean, we have a, we have a, you know, a small dumpster, plus, you know, plus recycling bins, and, you know, those, we have to, those are continually emptied, you know, I mean, filled up, you know, almost on a daily basis, where people are taking trash out there. I mean, there's no place else to, there's no place on the site to store them, other than that. And also, the east, the west side of the building, there's a very large tree right at the, right at the front of the building, as you walk up the front walk, right at the point where you would, if you were to try, you can't actually walk from the front walk to the west walk, west side of the building, because of this tree. It's a very large tree. It's right, right on the edge of the alley. And the third thing is, you know, using the west side is, you know, it's, it would be pretty uncomfortable, I think, walking down that, you know, because you're brushing up against the building and you're next to the, you know, the alley. The alley has a lot of traffic, because we're right behind the post office. The post office trucks from, till about 11 o'clock in the morning, the post office trucks are loading up their, you know, their stuff on the trucks every morning, and they take up the whole alley, you know, it's, you know, it's, and people park, you know, right next to the building, you know, it's not, it's not a very, using that west walkway is, I don't think would really qualify as an accessible route to the building.
It should also be noted that that west walkway, if you will, it is pitched likely for drainage reasons, so it may not be ADA compliant to begin with, and to regrade it could cause drainage issues for the foundation of the building.
Yeah, that was asked at the spark here. You know, we don't have, you know, this, the building is, you know, was built around 1885. It's got an old masonry foundation. We do not now have any drainage problems with the building. But if we were to remove that, you know, west walkway to get more pervious surface area there, I, you know, I don't think, we don't know what would happen to our drainage. I mean, we don't, like I said, we don't have any drainage problems now, because all the water can drain into the alley.
And the stairs in the back, the new concrete stairs to the basement, I see that you, it seems like you're just rebuilding what's there, but are those necessary, those stairs to the basement?
Yes, it's a second emergency, if you will, emergency exit from the basement, because we have relatively, you know, a lot of people in the basement with a computer lab, and we have offices down there, so, yes, I mean, it's purely for an emergency exit.
So, as reading through the Spark notes, they suggested that you revisit the issue of cost with your board to try and deal with the extra cost for a paver system, not necessarily the concrete system, but even just a standard paver system. Have you done that?
No, we have not, we, we're, the Spark notes are a little misleading, I think, about this. We, we're, we've had a grant to do the construction on a building, and I think the Spark notes say that we were, that we're over budget. We're not, we're not over, we're on budget. We're not over budget, but we're down to, we're down to the last phase of work that we're, that this worked on our grant, and there isn't going to be any more money available for us to do anything, other than, I mean, we're going to use, we're going to be able to finish the project for the money that we have, and that's it. I mean, we're not, you know, we're not, there isn't going to be any more available funds, We have a lot of, we have, along with this walk, we also are putting in, you know, new front and rear doors to the building, and new front and rear stairs, because those are badly needed, and that's going to, you know, that's going to exhaust our funds, though.
Have you discussed?
We don't.
Go ahead.
And we have, we also have a lot of other, I would call, higher priorities for the building that, you know, that we're not going to be able to do because of lack of funds. So, I know, you know, there is no interest in spending more money on a more expensive solution for the walkways, so.
I don't know if you guys have a Google map, but they're basically in a sea of asphalt and concrete, so.
Right.
Yeah.
The additional 300 square feet isn't really going to do much, make much of a difference.
Yeah, that's an excellent point.
Yeah, we have a, there's an alley on the west side of the property, there's an alley on the south side of the property. We're right behind the post office, as I mentioned, it was, you know, it's, we're in a, everything's a hard surface around there. And, you know, honestly, there isn't a drainage problem now.
For the record, was there anyone from the public who wished to speak with us regarding the case for 1114 Church Street? I'll note that there's no public comment. Any other board questions at this time? Mr. LeBotsky, anything further before we close the record and begin our deliberations?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, if that's it.
Any other questions?
From the board, then we'll close the record and begin our deliberations. Thank you.
Okay.
I don't take exception to the proposal. I mean, I think it's a very reasonable solution, working on a tight budget. I presume they're required to make these improvements. Side drainage isn't an issue, is an existing situation, and mandating addition, a more expensive solution really wouldn't change anything out there.
My one concern is, I'm not, is the potentiality of there not being an issue right now, but there's also, I mean, they are going up closer to the neighbors, which do have basement finished space, et cetera. So, while they may be in an overall sea of concrete, their microclimate kind of isn't a sea of concrete.
Right, but I think that the Spark actually made a valid point, which is that that walkway has to drain north-south, not east-west, so that they're necessarily draining. You know, I would suggest that they, yeah. I mean, I have been, I'm torn on this as well. I'm not, I can't see a better solution, short of not complying with ADA, which is not an option, short of flipping the whole house. short of flipping the whole house, flipping the site plan and moving the stairs to the other way, other side, which isn't an option either, so. I'm not really sure what else they can do, which leads me into a situation where it is a true hardship, and there is not, no other solution here to be had.
The only thing I'd like to see is something like a paver or something that would reduce that, I mean, reduce that runoff. I mean, honestly, and I don't care how much you slope that thing to the north, it's not going to the north. Water's just going to run off the side of a three-foot wide walkway.
It's a huge alley.
But...
I'd be curious to know, now that we've closed the record, how far it is to the, to the adjacent condominium building.
I think it's, like, pretty much right there. I think it's sort of on your, on your drawing.
I mean, part of that's telling, though, is that none of them are here, the board, and if we know anything about.
It's on this survey.
Yeah. Do you know anything about condo board?
Oh, go ahead.
If we know anything about condo boards, right, they are up in arms at the drop of a hat. And so, if they were concerned, they would be here, somebody would be here, so.
It's very rough, but it looks from Google Maps that it's like the width of a car and a half, another half, I mean, like, seven or eight feet before you even get to the, the line, and then possibly several more feet before the building starts.
Yeah, they're, the building, the condo building next door is probably in the, I don't know, three-foot range or something like that, off the property line. Actually, it says right here, 2.88, so there you go.
And then it's, it's enormous as well. A condo building?
Yeah.
They're covering like 90% of their lot. I'm just looking at the picture, so.
I think Clara's point about the sea of asphalt and concrete, for me, sort of carries the issue. I don't think even with some incidental runoff to the east, it's not going to make a big difference for the drainage that, that property experiences.
Yeah, I mean, it's really quite the anomaly and almost surprising that that building is still existing as a sort of residential property with a lawn and, and.
What's the only one on that block?
Yeah.
Yeah, them and the condo. Like, the condo has a front yard too, but then, then it tapers off. Okay, would anyone like some practice at the standards? Takers, takers?
I think we'd like to hear you do them as long as you can.
Okay, with that, we will run a discussion, we will run through the standards for a major variation. Standard number one, the requested variation will have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. This could be somewhat debated, but hopefully it does not force water into the adjoining property. Assuming as such, the requested variation should not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of the adjoining properties. Standard number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. This is a, essentially a residential property that has, that is acting as a sort of public commercial venue in what is otherwise a very impervious downtown area, and as such, it too needs to comply with accessibility, and we would certainly want to see the maintenance of this structure and its continued use, and I believe that is in accordance with the zoning ordinance. Standard number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. Again, as noted, essentially, this is a, a public use of a residential structure that is kind of uniquely situated on the, on the edge of the downtown area. And, and those situations certainly make this a peculiar property. Standard number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from your inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. We had discussions about the need for, the need for the property owners to provide accessible entrance to their used, to their most-used public spaces here, and information about the fact that the majority, if not all of their patrons, arrive either as pedestrians, or certainly are forced to park elsewhere and arrive to the specific site as pedestrians, and therefore, accessible entrance from the front of the property to those spaces is necessary, and would not be possible without a solution such as this, so I believe this standard has been met. Standard number five, the purpose of the variation is based, is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property, if I'm. If I'm correct, this is a not-for-profit or a city, is it not-for-profit or a city organization? I'm not even sure the answer, but, not-for-profit, sorry, thank you. This is a not-for-profit organization that has used this structure for quite some time, has, is obviously investing in the structure for its continued use, and, as I said, by its very nature as a not-for-profit, is not looking to profit additional income from this change. Standard number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. Several of the circumstances that we've discussed with respect to its relationship to the alley, tree, the certainly significant, significantly older structure than the organization, et cetera, indicate that the issues relevant to this case were not created by anyone having an interest in the property. Standard number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the zoning board of appeals issues its decision or recommendation to the city council regarding said variation. I think this is maybe where kind of most of our discussion was also about, was whether or not there were options for alternate locations that would create a least deviation. It seems that the conclusion on that issue is that the proposed location is, is the most appropriate and least deviating. I would note my inclination to, and preference to see a paver system that would, in fact, get somewhat of a credit in terms of the impervious surface, but I also note a significant number of board members who believe that, that this standard has been, has been met as well, and that is an undue, undue standard to be met. All right, we've run through the standards, had discussion. Is there a motion on this case?
I would move in the matter 13Z MJV 0082 regarding 1114 Church Street, that we approve the requested variation, provided that the development be in compliance with the testimony and documents submitted herein.
Second.
It's been moved. And say it all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Nay. Motion is carried. Good luck with your project. Next item on our agenda is 622 Davis Street, and Melissa, if you could read that into the record when you're ready?
Beacon Academy Amontory High School, lessee, applies for a special use permit for a private educational institution at 622 Davis Street. 622 Davis Street is located in the D2 Downtown Retail Core District, which requires a special use permit for private educational institutions to operate. Zoning code section 61134. The zoning board of appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case. Documents submitted as part of the record include: special use application submitted August 30th, 2013; letter of interest; plat of survey dated April 2nd, 2004; zoning analysis, standards form; site plan, aerial view, image of property, zoning map, and Spark meeting minutes of September 18th, 2013.
Before we begin, I'd just disclose that one of the board members for the project is a neighbor and friend of mine, but I do not believe that compromises my ability to be impartial and objective.
While we're at it, since we've already started on that, I would note that Mr. Friedland has indicated that he is go, is a representative for Beacon Academy. He has represented clients of mine in the past, but I do not have a direct relationship with him, and do not believe that that will alter my ability to make a impartial decision on this case either. Anything else before we go forward? All right, then, to start with, I'll swear on anyone who thinks that they wish to speak with us at all this evening with regard to this case. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth at the course of these proceedings? Okay, great, thank you.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Steve Friedland. I'm an attorney in Chicago with the firm of Applegate and Thorn Thompson, here representing Beacon Academy. Let me first introduce who's here and tell you a little bit about the proposal. Jeff Bell is the head of school for Beacon Academy. Next to Jeff is Terry Wright from Canon Design, the architect that's working with us on the space. And at the end of the row is Jill Greer, who's one of the board members of Beacon Academy. Beacon Academy is a new high school that is based on Montessori principles, and it's scheduled to open in September of next year, September of 2014. The plan is to lease the second, third, and fourth floor of 622 Davis. That's the building that currently has Cheesy's Restaurant in it, if you know that building. Beacon would be the only tenant other than the restaurant on the first floor. They would lease the rest of the building. As Melissa indicated, the property is zoned D2 Downtown Retail Core, and a private educational institution is a special use in that district, and that's why we're here and requesting that. Our presentation will be made by Jeff to talk about the school, what we're planning. Terry will then speak a little bit about some of the work being done in the building, but frankly, we have really very little work that we're planning on the space, and then we certainly are here to take any questions you might have. Jeff.
Good evening. Thanks very much for, for listening to us this evening. So, Jeff Bell, head of school, home address is 732 Florence Avenue here in Evanston, a new resident. And Beacon Academy is a high school that, as Steve said, is opening hopefully in, in the fall of 2014, a school based on Montessori principles, and we've, we've very intentionally chosen Evanston as our home because of the incredible richness of cultural offerings, a world-class university, and the great civic institutions that are a part of this city. And we plan to incorporate our educational program to take advantage of these, of these institutions. We've formed partnerships with the Piven Theater, with the Evanston Arts Center, with the Evanston Public Library, with the musical offering, and with a few different arms of Northwestern University. And each day, I'm meeting with more and more people in, at the YMCA, the YWCA, and other places such as that to, to really create a community school. Essentially, as you can tell, it's a, it's a small footprint for a high school, probably quite different from the ones that all of us attended. 9,500 square feet is, is relatively tiny, but that's because largely, much of the learning, probably 15 to 25%, depending on the age group, will be happening off-site, outside of the classroom, at, at the institutions I've mentioned earlier, as well as working with local businesses and other community leaders through service learning partnerships, internships, externships, and the like. We'll offer, also be offering what's called an IB program, which is International Baccalaureate, which is an internationally recognized curriculum that, that a number of schools in the city of Chicago use, as well as across the world. And that's for 11th and 12th grade students. The way in which we envision the internal space looking is with a highly flexible floor plan with movable walls, movable furniture, and, and chairs, and things of that sort, to create a flexible learning environment, so that students, it won't be a number of students sitting in rows, it rather, tables, and other configurations of that sort. We have, we've already retained a director of admissions, who have a, a very strong admissions policy, and we feel confident that the students that will be admitting to the school will be able to handle this level of responsibility and, and find great success academically. We are looking at a number of other different models in the country, specifically schools in Cleveland, Ohio, as well as Houston, Texas, and these schools have found great success in, in similar models, and we feel good, confident based on the level of interest inquiries that we've received for our admissions process, that we'll, we'll find some success in that as well. And finally, we, I think that might be all I have. I'm happy to answer questions, but I will turn it over to Terry for now, and then, of course, be available. Thank you.
Jeff, as long as we're, maybe just to get a few other things on the record. Number of students, how you're sort of starting your process with, you expect the school to be freshman through senior initially? Talk through that a little bit.
Sure, thank you. So, we plan on admitting 30 to 50 students that first year, and the space will max out at 120 students. Additionally, as we're located very close to public transportation, we anticipate the great majority of the students employing the Metro and the L to get to the, to the space, which will, we hope to alleviate much of the drop-off and pickup procedures that, that will come in place for a school of smaller children, of course.
So, if the space will accommodate 120 students, do you intend to control that through the admissions process, or is there some plan to expand to a different location at some point?
We signed a five-year lease, and if, if we have a complete overflow of students, then we'll, we'll look for some other spaces. For right now, I'm still waiting for applications, so I don't want to get ahead of myself just yet.
And, and maybe for Jeff to explain that, or I'll explain it, you can confirm it. The 30 to 50 initial students will really be a freshman class and maybe some sophomores, and then as that freshman class works itself through, they'll become seniors. So, eventually, over, you know, over the first few years of the school, it'll, it'll take three or four years to get a full freshman through senior class. And at that point, I think their feeling is, they'll see sign of, sort of, where they fit in that, in that space, or if potentially need other space. That's how they sort of timed out, timed out the lease term that they're entering into. Why don't we go to Terry?
Hi, good evening. My name is Terry Wright, and I'm with Canon Design of Chicago, Illinois. And we've been working with Beacon for over a year, helping them work through program and curriculum, and to look at spaces. And we're very excited about the Davis Street facility. It has the three floors. We actually have limited work to do from the architecture side, so we're excited to be working with them on some of the furniture and graphics. Of the three spaces, we hope to retain as much of the inside as we can. They have the exit stairs, the elevator, ADA-accessible restrooms, sinks that are already handicap accessible, so a lot of our, our code work is, is done for us with the existing facility. The building is sprinkled. It has its own mechanical units that serve these three floors, separate from the restaurant, and it has electrical capacity already to serve the students and the, and the staff needs. So, from the design side, the second floor and the third floor, which are what is being held up, some of the smaller offices that are on the, the north and south side, we will combine a couple of those into some larger group space. But as Jeff said, the approach to the school is not your traditional 900-square-foot classroom with the front of the, front of the room. It's looking at collaboration, workspace, and then on the fourth floor, using, it's a, it's an open floor plan right now, being able to use furniture, movable walls, to create some of their large, what we're calling learning labs, and, and spaces for larger groups to meet. We're excited, I'm sorry?
For the record, just to indicate that the, the images that we are seeing are consistent with those that were provided in the packet. And did I understand correctly that these are existing plans, not necessarily proposed?
Correct. These are existing. We're just working through with Jeff and his staff. We're just working through with Jeff and his staff on the exact needs and the types of furniture and graphics and finishes that we would want to use. And we'll be preparing drawings, and we're verifying some of the code-related items such as CFM with the mechanical equipment and smoke detector locations as we speak.
Are you proposing a second means of egress?
There actually are two. It's a great, it's a very unique and efficient use of space. There's, it's a scissors stair with two exits. So there are two stairs, and one would exit out the front of the building and one exits on the first floor out the back of the building.
Is there an alley back there?
There is an alley. Sorry.
Maybe hard to see.
So if I put north up, sorry. Architect, I always have to put north up. So Davis is out here, the building is here, there is an alley behind the building, as well as the Davis Street. So the one stair goes out a hallway to the door, to the back of the exit, and then the other stair leads you to the front entry, vestibule, and out the front door.
Since we don't have a plan of survey, are you saying that the building is lot line to lot line? The entire building, or is there parking or some paving in the back?
I think we actually do, you do have a survey.
I do?
Or at least we submitted one. Let me take a look at that.
It's sort of in the middle of the pack.
All right. Sorry. Too much paperwork. There it is.
Yeah, it seems, it appears to be lot line to lot line.
So the answer is yeah.
Party wall situation.
Yes, it is.
So I think one of the things we're probably most interested in is ingress and egress and drop-offs and all that stuff. And school start time, school end time, and is it staggered? And is everybody coming at the same time? And what happens when you take 20 of them over to Northwestern? How do they get there?
Sure. So we've scheduled start time for 8:45 in the morning and dismissal at 3:45. The building will be open as early as 7:30 or 7:00 in the morning and be closing around 6:00 or 6:30, depending on what activities are happening on campus.
And does that start time, sorry to interrupt, does that start time correspond with metro times?
It does. It does. And essentially, because it's a high school, there'll be people in the building all the times, and depending on what time kids get there, we want to make it a welcome space for them so they can, they're allowed to hang out after school or be there before school. So I mean, I'm sure that the bulk of students will be arriving at 8:45 or right around there, but in terms of ending times, it's going to be, I think, a very staggered leave time, largely because of athletics and other extracurricular activities. If students are leaving campus to go to Northwestern or to go to Piven or something, they will be accompanied by a staff member, always. And then in terms of checking out or checking into the building, we're working through a number of different options, and one being having a receptionist at a desk with a camera buzzing children in, or some sort of a card swipe method to get them in, depending on what cost looks like and how we want to put things together. I'm sure there's some questions you also asked that I didn't answer yet.
Yeah, people in cars and transportation.
Yeah, buses, that sort of thing.
Sure. So we are not anticipating having a bus at this point in time. In terms of dropping off, we'd like to, we consider talking to the city for that, you know, for that hour or for the 45 minutes in the morning, putting a hood on the parking meter. But otherwise, we're not asking for anything else in terms of parking. We'd like to have some, talk to the city as well about some parking for faculty potentially in a garage, but that's, I'm not sure if that's in your wheelhouse, but it's something we want to think about as well.
I think it certainly is within our wheelhouse in terms of like where they would be, where they would be parking, and it certainly would be something that we would consider and something that we very traditionally actually condition, that arrangements be made for off-street parking for those full-time faculty members, or administrative staff, et cetera. Which, and we circle around parking a lot and around loading a lot, so on that vein, how about supplies getting dropped off? What's your access situation to the rear? Food, how much of that is arriving and that sort of thing?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but there won't be food prep on property. The students would bring their lunch, or they would utilize one of the restaurants in the downtown Evanston area. So other deliveries like paper or such would come in the back. There's a delivery door off the alley, and they would deliver in that location and have access. Again, depending on whether it's a card swipe or a camera system, be able to be buzzed in by whoever the administration is that's controlling the doors.
Terry, if I could ask you a question, as a school space, is there a common assembly space? So you are going to have assemblies?
There, we are looking, yeah. We're calling it a gathering or a community space, and most like, right now, it's looking like it'll be the fourth floor in the front space, and it could be, whether it's a speaker that comes in to talk to the whole student body, if they had just one grade at a time, if they be used as lunch space, if they go, people bring their lunch or go out and bring food in. So it is, we're looking at the flexible furniture. We don't want to plan for that large of a space for all the time, but to be able to give them the flexibility to set it up if they need to, or to have access to it as the curriculum needs it.
What about student parking? Because at some point, right, they turn 16, and then they want to drive, and now you've got 30 kids driving to Evanston in the morning?
We're not going to let them drive. No.
If only it was that easy.
We will very much be encouraging public transportation in some way or another. If and when students start to want to drive, we will look into different parking options. We won't have them parking on the street. We'll have, we'll, again, talk to you all about how things like that might work as hopefully a revenue generator for you.
Well, the parking meters themselves alleviate that issue, or no? Is there anywhere on the street that they can park that's not metered anywhere?
There's meters along the whole area, but I think there needs to be a balance between school needs and commercial needs. And I think that's really what we're getting at.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I was just trying to, I was trying to figure out if there was any residential in that area that the students could use, because I think since they won't be able to presumably get to their cars, the meters should...
Well, they'd have to go over to Hinman.
You have to go quite a ways east on Davis.
Meters would take care of most students on like a...
It's Hinman the first one.
But it's also two-hour parking. I just got a ticket today, so it's just two-hour parking on Hinman. So, and we don't want kids wandering out for every two hours. I mean, that's not going to be helpful for us or for them.
I guess what I was trying to get is, obviously, it's a concern, but I, but we may not need to condition it specifically, because it probably takes care of itself.
The best solution is probably to send people down to Sherman Plaza.
I have an arrangement.
There's a Davis Street entrance.
Right.
I wanted to go back, though, to, so you mentioned athletics. So where is that going to take place, and how are you going to get students to and from
those activities?
Sure. So we've hired an athletic director, and we are currently, we've talked with Chandler Newberger, we've talked with the LA Fitness, and with the YMCA, and we're working on different potential partnerships with those institutions. If it ends up being Chandler Newberger, the kids will take the purple line up to Central Street and hop off. LA Fitness is walkable, and so is the YMCA. And again, they'd be escorted by their coach or by a faculty member to get to those places.
Do they, well, is it anticipated that they'll have athletic events against other schools and other communities?
Yes.
And so then, how will you address that?
It depends on how, which space we take and what they're willing to, we're just negotiating some of those issues right now. Ideally, we wouldn't want to be always playing away games in a basketball court in a different school, so we'll see what we can, what we can have happen. I know that, I know that it can happen, and there's some, there's been some good interest from all of these spots to have us in their spaces, so it's just a matter of trying to find the best situation for our school.
But for example, when you have an away game and you have 15 kids who need to get on a bus, where's that bus loading these kids? How do the kids actually get there? Is everybody responsible for their own transportation, or?
I'm anticipating them being responsible for their own transportation at this point. And if that, if that changes, then we'll, we would let you know and address that, but I'm anticipating them having to find their way.
It seems to me like, in a type of school like this, you might also have not only your actual staff, but it seems to me like you would have a fair number of people that aren't parents, that are coming to the school to do a lecture or, you know, work with somebody or something like that. So I think, so that should also be probably considered in terms of some of the parking issues and things like that.
Though, to that respect, this is an office building, so presumably those same types of intermittent guests coming to an office, I don't know that we anticipate that type of user to be any different than a typical office client or guest coming to a meeting. I think we've sort of identified that obviously the student body, the teachers, that's a little bit different than maybe you'd see in an office space, but, and frankly, it might be a little harder to police people, you know. You have someone coming in to give a presentation. My guess is they'll, if they're smart, they'll park in the parking garage, because otherwise they'll get a ticket, but if they, if they're, if not, they'll park on the street.
How often would you anticipate having those outside speakers? Is that a daily, weekly?
I anticipate outside speakers coming in as they would in a typical high school. I mean, it's a part of our program. We'll as much be going off-campus as people coming on-campus.
So it's a couple times a month, maybe, at best case? Okay. And everything you have for off-campus is always either within walking distance or within public transportation? You are never putting kids on a bus and taking them somewhere?
I mean, frankly, it depends how many students we have the first year. So it could be, I mean, I can anticipate, for example, if we take a trip to Wisconsin, we would take a bus. We would work out a place that wouldn't bottle up traffic on Davis Street to load the bus, for example. I suspect at points in time that'll happen, but it's not, it won't be a regular occurrence.
Does the alley actually pull through? Can you pull through that alley?
I think so. There's parking. You can. Okay. Thank you. Yes.
And you're not doing anything to the outside of the building, right?
We'll have a sign that says Beacon Academy, but nothing, nothing.
But you're not painting or, I don't know?
No.
Doing anything weird?
That's for the inside of the building, not the outside of the building.
Did you have anything else specific before we?
No.
See if anyone else has anything?
No, we're fine.
Okay. Was there anyone from the public who wished to speak with us this evening regarding this case? Note that I don't see any takers who wish to speak to us regarding the 622 Davis Street case. Kind of went through some of the spark minutes. Was there anything else that you can think of, Melissa, that was brought up that we might need to be concerned of, given the unusual use?
The only other thing that I would note is, given this is an existing building, there is no specific parking requirement. However, if this were new construction, then specific to this use, there would be a total of 14 parking spaces required. That would be one for every three employees, plus one for every 10 students of driving age.
Okay. Thank you, that's helpful. Mr. Bell, do you think it's reasonable, given the condition of the alley, that if you did have a bus pick up, that they could pick up your students from the alley? Is that, I'm not sure about the inside, the inside conditions and the alley conditions, like is that a reasonable scenario, that a bus picks up your students from the rear?
So there's an alley that's one building down that does run north and south that seems to be wide enough that a bus could find its way in and not block up traffic? The only thing I would, I would mention and I guess ask the board, I think the expectation is these, it would be very infrequent that something like this would happen where you'd have a bus coming to the school. This is Davis Street. We had Garcia Ordano, we had Dan Center Evanston at Davis Street for years, and, you know, there, it's not a one lane of traffic street, so, you know, certainly if a bus were to pick up and take up a lane for a short period of time in an infrequent basis, it doesn't seem like that would be difficult. And I can imagine that that happens in downtown Evanston now. Offices go out for some purpose and rent a small van or whatever it might be. I'm sure people do that all the time. So I think we're talking about infrequent use, and if we're heading toward a condition, I would, I would ask that we not do that, because I think it might be difficult to have that always occur in the alley. You never know what goes on in alleys, you know? Garbage trucks sit there and it may be hard to comply with something like that. That's the only thought.
Okay, anything further from the board at this point? Did you guys have anything else to close with?
No. I don't think so. Thank you very much. We certainly can answer more questions to the extent they come up in your deliberations.
Are the rest of the board members okay with closing the record? We good? Okay, then with that, we will close the record and begin our deliberations. Any comments or thoughts before we review standards?
I'd just start with a comment that I think the project seems like it's probably very good for Evanston. Talking about bringing 120 to 150 people into a space that's currently vacant and having them buy lunch in Evanston, shop at stores in Evanston after school lets out, it seems like it's probably a very good thing for the city. I also think that we can control any perceived traffic or parking issue with the types of conditions that we typically put on off-street, regarding off-street parking. The bus issue doesn't concern me as much.
As far as parking, it's actually not parking that concerns me so much, because I tend to agree with the idea that the downtown core parking and the permit situation in the residential near the downtown core will somewhat take care of parking with, quite likely, us imposing additional conditions. I'm a little concerned about drop-off. I think it'll depend a lot on what the demographics of the student body end up being. If it is a lot of North Shore students, I hope that they'll take Metro, but I wonder, I mean, I feel like it's more likely that Chicago students would, I don't know, I just, I foresee a potential problem at drop-off and pickup time. But, you know, if we... But, you know, if we can find a way to mitigate that, I'm fine. And overall, I agree with Member Engold's comments. I think it's a good, sounds like a good idea for the city.
Are there any other concerns regarding drop-off and pickup and/or potential solution ideas?
Didn't we have a special use on Davis, like, a couple of years ago, about a school or something like that?
Thinking about Royce Moore, I think.
No. Or it was?
There was a daycare center.
Yeah, an adult daycare center or something like that? Did that eventually never get off the ground? I'm just asking about the, is there anything else in the immediate vicinity that is doing things with 120 people?
The.
From a drop-off and?
The use that you might be referring to is Bright Horizons at 1629 Ellington. And their drop-offs are done through the alley.
No, this was, this was like an adult daycare center.
There was like an infant daycare. It was probably before you were here.
It, I actually don't think it ended up going anywhere. I don't think it ever.
I thought it was on Davis because we had this conversation about.
Oh.
Davis Street Fish Market and parking and.
There was gonna be a drop-off or a daycare where the Jordano's is now. It fronted Chicago, but it ran along Davis.
Yeah, like where Active Endeavors was?
Oh, right. But that never went anywhere.
Never went.
So there's, so there's no, there's not.
Precedence or example.
An overabundance of drop-offs and pickups in this neighborhood. There's nothing else going on that's doing drop-offs and pickups on Davis Street.
Okay. No, other than.
I mean.
Just, just, just north of Davis.
Right Horizons is doing it from the alley immediately north of the bank. So their traffic is presumably circling around, down.
And then the Mather and the, what's the other one that we just had in front of us the other week?
Oh, the North Shore.
North Shore.
North Shore, right. But they're, it's small and they have dedicated vans and they've got pull-ins.
Right.
This may be a little bit of a self-policing situation.
Yeah.
I mean, the, Mr. Bell's testimony was that students will be encouraged to take public transportation. And these are high school students that probably don't want mom and dad driving them to school. And so, you know, to the extent that there are people getting rides, I think if they're, they still have to get there on time and if there's a problem, they won't drive. If there's a problem, I mean, I feel like if they're creating a traffic problem for themselves, it'll remedy itself. I, I guess between those, all those factors, I'm less, I'm less concerned that anything significant will materialize.
I don't, I don't know that they'll create a tra, I don't know. I don't see them creating a traffic issue so much as themselves, as much as just the sort of double parking scenario, like.
Right.
Double-loading scenario or whatever out on Davis Street is basically.
But I would imagine that's a bigger concern at pickup and if.
The police will deal with that. I mean, that's, you can't do that.
I mean, I guess, since there is alley access, it's not unprecedented for us to do sort of an alley access, drop-off or pickup. And I don't know if we make it a specific condition, but going forward to City Council, I think it's something that, the condition of that alley, the condition of the access to alley needs to be explored further and considered in terms of its ability to be used to mediate any potential issues at the front. Any other discussion topics?
So from off-street parking, so required off-street parking, are we thinking about having them provide what would be required for new construction? And I see one head shaking, no, but.
No, I don't think, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that from Melissa.
There is technically no parking requirement since it's an existing building, but if there were a parking requirement, it would be for 14 spaces.
Right. It's not new construction.
I don't know. This is a special use, A. And, I don't know, I find that aspect of our zoning ordinance to not be very helpful whatsoever, especially in special use situations. I mean, the fact that the building already exists and you totally change the use of it, that's not helpful language. And, just not. So, I, I mean, I think the special use, that, that, I think that the very nature of considering special uses is for us to consider what special requirements might come from those.
But I think we can look at this like we often look at, at special uses. We require, for example, employees to have leased off-site parking.
Agreed.
Something like that.
Agreed.
But getting into the one per 10 of driving age, I don't know if that's something we want to do, but I definitely would support something that encourages leasing for faculty, administration, staff members, so that those spaces are accounted for.
Agreed.
I agree with that as well.
There was mention of no food prep. Does anybody consider that significant enough to pull out as a, an item?
Oh, as a condition that they don't have food prep?
I'm just, I'm just, I just wrote notes for things that caught my attention. I'm not necessarily saying I'm asking for it. I'm just trying to run through my notes really quickly.
I think because of the limited amount of space that they have, they're not going to dedicate any type of space to food prep.
To that sort of thing.
So I don't know that that's something we need to worry about.
Operational hours?
However, though, I, I would add that they are going to have potentially a significant number of people eating lunch on-site and we probably ought to include the.
The litter.
Litter and garbage collection plan condition, which probably isn't problematic. I'm sure there's dumpsters back there in the alley, but.
Right.
Good point. Operational hours, do we, I don't know that there's any point specifically that is helpful on this one.
For schools, I don't know that that's, that's all that, I mean, most schools are going to have similar hours. It's when we get into restaurants and things like that, where a new restaurant could come in and they want to be open till 2:00 in the morning. If there's a school that wants to come in and be open till 2:00 in the morning, I suppose they probably could.
What we probably can agree on is that delivery should be in the alley, for sure. Okay. So, as actual conditions, I mean.
The only other thing that I noticed in the, the Spark minutes was a comment on venting for science labs. Melissa, do you remember anything on the discussion on that? It just says, "Research is being conducted regarding venting for science labs."
That would only be required if they did material science. Are you guys, I, I mean, it's probably just gonna be physical science. They're probably not gonna do fully vented hood sciences. I presume you would use Northwestern's resources for that?
But even so, wouldn't it be code required?
I think the code would take care of that issue, I'm thinking.
If I may, just to, the, the discussion at Spark was a discussion about what code might require. So we certainly are going to comply with code and that'll be a, I mean, that's a condition of the special use.
Obviously. Yeah.
Okay. So for actual conditions, I have deliver, in no particular order, deliveries on the alley, off-street parking, arrangements for employees, litter and garbage collection plan. And I would certainly encourage them to, to look at more finite solutions to their, to their loading of buses and/or drop, pickup, drop-off. But I don't know if there's a specific requirement for that. Anything that I missed? All right. Then with that, we will run through the standards for a special use. We are, as with all special uses, recommending to the City Council on this case. And we'll put this together. Standard number one for requested special use is that the requested special use is on the list of special uses in the zoning ordinance. And we note the requested special use of a private educational institution within the D2 Downtown Core District. Standard number two, the requested special use is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the Comprehensive General Plan and the zoning ordinance. This is indeed a special use that has been considered and listed within the downtown district. It's certainly a desire of the Comprehensive General Plan to provide a mix of uses in this district that feed off each other, so long as they do not create negative scenarios for each other. But we have had some discussion with respect to the people that, that this type of use would bring in and, and their mix with the other shops and restaurants, et cetera, and other institutional uses within the immediate area. So I believe this standard has been met. Standard number three, the special use should not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types on the immediate neighborhood and the effect of the proposed type of special use upon the city as a whole. There does not appear to be a direct, a directly similar special use in this area. We've talked about some special uses that were considered in the past, but were not followed through on and therefore their negative cumulative effect with respect to this property is no longer applicable. And as a whole, there's no evidence that this particular special use will cause a negative cumulative effect on the area or on other special uses in the area. Standard number four, the requested special use does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. The proposed use, in fact, has signed a five-year lease for an empty property and is certainly maintaining, maintaining use of an existing property and keeping full our leasing within the downtown area so that, if anything, should maintain and, and help the value of property in the area by maintaining the level of, of traffic within the area, pedestrian or otherwise. Standard number five, the requested special use can be adequate, adequately served by public facilities and services. There hasn't been any indication that this facility cannot be adequately served by the public facilities and services of the city. It is served by a public alley that should certainly serve to facilitate some of the private functions of the building. And the intended use does not appear to be substantially more intensive on public facilities and services than the existing office use was. So I believe this standard has been met as well. Standard number six, the requested special use does not cause undue traffic congestion. We've had considerable conversation about this and in consideration of the conditions discussed with respect to employee parking deliveries on the alley and certainly the hope that the, the school will work closely with, with, with all patrons to facilitate the most, the most effective traffic plan and parking plan. We believe this standard has been met as well. Standard number seven, the requested special use preserves significant historical and architectural resources. I don't believe this is a historic structure, if I recall correctly. However, we will note that it is reusing or maintaining use of an existing downtown building. Standard number eight, the requested special use serves, preserves significant natural and environmental features. Again, mostly not applicable standard in this particular case as this is a lot-line-to-lot-line building, but we are, we are continuing to reuse an existing structure within the city. Standard number nine, the requested special use complies with all of the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and other applicable ordinances, except to the extent such regulations have been modified through the plan development process or the grant of variation. There's no indication at this time that the proposal is or will not be in compliance with all applicable regulations. We, as always, note that there are many standards which a school is expected to meet, both with the city, state, et cetera. And it is certainly our anticipation that those will be, will be carried forward in order for them to get their approvals to begin. With that, we have run through the standards. Is there any further discussion before we move to a motion? Seeing none, is there a motion?
In the matter 13Z, MJV0083, regarding 622 Davis Street, I move that we recommend to City Council approval of the proposed project with the following conditions: that deliveries occur within the alley to the rear of the building, that the, the tenants provide off-street parking for faculty and staff, that because of the fact that we are bringing potentially 120 to 150 people who will be eating out, that we have the staff share with the applicant the litter and garbage plan for the city and ask them to adhere to it, and that they continue to explore options on pickup and drop-off so as to have the least impact on Davis Street.
A motion has been made.
I second the motion.
The motion has been made. And seconded, although it's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
And is there any other business before we close for this evening?
If I could just note for everybody here, I assume that you all got Lori's email, but she has one meeting left with us before she leaves the city of Evanston and the Zoning Board of Appeals. The position of the chairmanship is appointed by the mayor, so the mayor will be making that determination. However, Lori is currently acting as the liaison to the Economic Development Committee. Now, their next meeting is Wednesday, October 23rd. Do you intend to?
I do intend to make it to that meeting.
Okay. Whether we want to discuss tonight or at some point in the future, it is up to you guys in who you'd like to choose as a new liaison.
The meeting, the next meeting, it won't be till the end of November, so you can wait till you have a chairman and, and figure that out at that point, if you'd like, so.
And make them tell somebody they have to do it.
Yes.
Pass that down.
Anything else, you guys? All right. Well, then that, with that, we'll be adjourned. Thank you.